All right, thank you folks for coming tonight. We appreciate you being here, appreciate your attendance. I'd like to call this meeting of the Macon County Board of Commissioners to order, April 12th, a regular meeting. The sheriff has presented me with the, uh, the public comment. Does anyone wish to sign up for the public comment? That did not. You still have time, we'll even recognize you when the time comes. We have a couple of things to take care of before then. But again, welcome, glad you're here. I appreciate all of you being in attendance. First thing we do is announcements, and we'll start. Mike, anything to announce tonight? Mr. County Manager, anything to announce?
Yes, Mr. Sheriff, I would like to make an announcement. Tonight will be the first night that citizens are able to log on to the county website at www.maconnc.org and watch our commissioner videos live. You'll have the option of watching those in standard definition or high definition. As well as that, you can also access the meetings after the actual meeting in addition to the live stream. And you'll be able to do that by logging on to www.maconnc.org. There's a commissioner videos icon in the bottom left-hand of the screen. And so if you want to watch it live, you can just simply click on that tab and you'll be directed to the live stream. If you missed the live stream and would like to watch the commissioner meeting afterwards, then you can simply go to the Macon County website, click on the commissioners tab at the top, and go to the, and access it from there.
So we're, we're very excited about that. It's something that IT has worked very hard in getting together and getting done. Again, it's, uh, it's just another step. And many counties around the state are beginning to do this, just for transparency, accountability to, to the taxpaying citizens. And we're very excited and think you'll, you'll find this as a great resource as a Macon County citizen and taxpayers. So, again, many thanks to the IT department. We could not have done that without them. So we're very excited and, and hope you, if you can't make it, hope you can enjoy it on our website.
With that said, there's three cameras. One's back there, one's a mobile camera, and one's directly over my head that's directed at you guys. So you guys are being filmed too. So just so you know, if you're where you're not supposed to be, or with somebody you're not supposed to be with, that's, that's a, that's a public disclaimer. And, uh, my wife's sitting by Carl Gillespie, I don't know if that's a good thing or not. Already, already on video, too late.
That's why.
Too late, too late. Anyway, I, I shared with our, sort of meeting folks here, there's certainly, I think the county manager, we shared that not to compete with anything they're doing. We always have newspaper, Macon Media, radio is always here. This is simply another record of our meeting. It will be a record that'll be on our website, and this will continue long after probably all of us are gone. So this is, but this is the first meeting that is being, uh, recorded in that forum, and will be, again, stored on the website. So you can go and click, if you missed the meeting, you can click on that and watch the meeting in its entirety at a later time. Anything, Mr. Shields?
Mr. Beal? I'm sure we're gonna have it somewhere in the program, Mr. Chairman, but tomorrow night in Waynesville, beginning at 5:15, is our district meeting.
Yeah.
For the, for the far west, so if you want some more information about that, just let me know and we'll, supper is included. And that'll be at the Waynesville Inn, starts at 5:15.
That's the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners.
Yes.
Commissioner Tate, anything, Mr. Hilton, Lori?
Chester.
All right. I do not have anything. Let's rise in reverence a moment of silence, and then I will ask Commissioner Tate to lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we see it? Public hearing, we have none tonight. Public comment, we have none. No one wants to speak tonight? Nobody? We got several on the agenda, but it's unusual, we have nobody. So, Sheriff, noted, nobody, nobody signed up?
That's a first.
Maybe, one of the few. Additions to the agenda, does any commissioner or county manager have anything to add or delete? I know I've, I've already been made aware, if you would strike item 11A, that agreement, that's an agreement with Macon County Business Development Center. It's a new lease with Magnetic Rich Manufacturing. That lease is not quite ready to go, is that correct?
Well, no, we, the paperwork's ready to go. I think there's some more discussion being had between the economic development director and the proposed lessee.
Okay.
The lessee's not ready to go.
And let me remind everyone, I was reminding you, Shields, make sure your microphone is turned towards you and the button is pushed up, or they will not be able to hear you. The red button should be in the other position, and the microphone towards you. That way they can, everybody, and everybody in the room can hear you that way as well. Thank you, Chester. So we'll postpone that till further notice. Anything else, Mr. Manager, to be deleted or added?
No, sir, other than the, uh, legal counsel has a couple of.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a few.
Yes, sir.
Relatively easy matters. The Macon County Housing Program, the rehabilitation housing program, there are two deeds of trust that need to be canceled. I have prepared paperwork for those, and one is the chief deed of trust, the other's the high deed of trust. I have provided copies and releases for you and the paperwork at each of your seats.
I see that, is that, would you consider that old business or new business?
Uh, it's new business.
Okay, let's put, we'll make that item, uh, I think, we'll make that item, uh, D, which is actually item C, because we deleted A, right? So cancellation of deed of trust.
Yes.
Deeds of trust.
And, uh, Mr. Chairman, I have been working with Mr. John Henny Jr., town Franklin attorney, preparing a interlocal agreement between the TDA and Macon County for the Appalachian Trail Transportation, which is heretofore been discussed by the board, and for funding to be received by the county from the TDA. And I have that in a local agreement for the board's consideration, is it?
Okay, gentlemen, we'll add that as, uh, after the cancellation deed of trust, we'll make that now 11F, if you would. Anything else to add? Okay, thank you, Chester, anything? Gary, Lori?
I do have one item, I have placed a copy at your seats. It's just an application for lottery funds, because this board has to approve it, and then we also have to get the school board to approve it.
Okay, we'll make that the next item. Okay, anything else to be added to the agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Still moving, Chairman.
So, if second, a motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, that motion passes. That being done, we have three reports tonight, and we'd like to welcome all those folks here. First of all, Chuck Coburn. Chuck, welcome, glad you're here. And I think you have a couple of guests with you, if you'd like to introduce them.
Yes, we have the Vice President of the Holly Springs Community Development Club, and that's Joe V. And our Secretary of Treasury, Jim S.
Glad you're here, if you would come up. Chuck, Chuck Coburn is President of the Holly Springs Community Development Club. So Chuck, welcome.
Thank you. Have a letter to read to you.
You go right ahead.
Dear Board of Commissioners, two miles east of the Little Tennessee River in Macon County is a thriving section of Franklin known as Holly Springs Community. Two creeks, Cat Creek and Rabbit Creek, so named for two Native American chiefs who once lived there, drained the community, which is one of the oldest in Macon County. It was on Cat Creek Road, one of the two main roads in Holly Springs Community, that on October 27th, 1915, Jerry and Aninus Franklin deeded approximately two and one-half acres to the Macon County Board of Education for $25, for the purpose of building a public school. A bid to furnish materials was opened by the Board of Education, and the contract was awarded to B.J. Hurst to build the schoolhouse in the Millsholl Township for a bid of $745. The two-room elementary school, grades one through seven, was completed and opened in 1916. The Holly Springs School remained active from 1916 till the early 1950s, at which time the East Franklin Elementary School opened, and the Millsholl Township children began to attend school there. After the Holly Springs closed, school closed, the building became the voting location for the Millsholl Precinct, and also the meeting place of the Holly Springs Community Development Club, which is still going strong today. I would like to express my great appreciation to every person from 1916 to 2016, who has had a part in preserving, protecting, and improving the Holly Springs School Building. And with 2016 being the 100th anniversary, I would like to respectfully ask the Board of Commissioners to issue a proclamation honoring this momentous occasion. And thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I think we can do that verbally, can we not?
Certainly.
Chester, would, I would entertain a motion to honor the Holly, to honor Spring, the Holly Springs Community on their 100th anniversary, and to recognize this Community Development Club for continued contributions to, not only to our, the community, but to the county. So I would entertain a motion to that effect.
Some of.
Second motion and second, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, sir. We appreciate, appreciate you being here. We appreciate all our community clubs so active in our county and do so much for our communities and its citizens, so, uh, thank you for your contributions. And that, and just so you know, gentlemen, we, the county renovated that building, what, right, four years ago?
Four years.
Three, four years ago? Did quite a bit of renovation there, so it's at least in pretty presentable shape now, in good shape for community events and that kind of thing, so, uh, we're proud of that. Thank you, Chuck. We have the, uh, the Director of the Southwestern, uh, well, our, our agenda says, Southwestern Commission Annual Report, Executive Director Ryan Sherby. And Ryan Sherby is the Executive Director of that organization, however, he's in the short rows. Ryan has, uh, has retired. Ryan is going to be, uh, moving on to some other things, and the Executive Committee did, I think it's been in some of the local media, did a rather extensive search, had a number of applications, and, uh, she doesn't have the position yet, but I think, is it April 30?
Twenty fifth.
April 25th, Ms. Sarah Thompson will assume that role, and Sarah has been with the organization for a number of years. And I will share with you what, uh, what Ryan Sherby said, this is his words. He said, "Sarah is better prepared to take this position at this point in her career than I was when I took that." And so that speaks a lot, because Ryan's done an outstanding job, uh, the group, that, his organization's brought a lot of economic development to the western part of the state, a lot of senior services, and I'll go on and on, but, or I could go on and on, but Sarah's gonna present to you, uh, the annual report, and we'll highlight some of the things at the Southwestern Commission. So Sarah, for the first time, we welcome you as the almost Executive Director.
Thank you.
Of the Southwest Commission, so welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners and members of the public. As Kevin said, my name's Sarah Thompson, soon to be the Director of the Southwestern Commission. Last year was our 50th anniversary. We put out an annual report every year, so this report is for 2015, which was our 50th year in operation. We belong to the local governments of the region. We work for the seven county governments and the 17 municipal governments within the seven county region. And our board is comprised of a county commissioner representative from each county, and usually the mayor of the municipalities. Commissioner Corbin currently serves as our chairman, and we're grateful for his leadership in that role. Commissioner Beal represents Macon County on our Transportation Advisory Committee, so we appreciate Macon County's involvement in the organization. Local governments pay a per capita dues to the organization, which raises, um, approximately $145,000 per year. In 2015, it did. We use those local dues to leverage over $6 million in funds that come into the region. About 5 million of those are passed through funding that comes from the federal and state level and goes into the local governments for services rendered to your citizens. We primarily focus in three areas. We have the Area Agency on Aging, the Workforce Development Department, and Community and Economic Development. So I'm gonna spend a little bit of time telling you about each department and what we do, and I would welcome any questions you have when I'm done. The report outlines some specific initiatives from 2015. The Area Agency on Aging is funded by the Federal Older Americans Act, and there are home and community care block grant funds that you appoint a local committee that oversees those funds for Macon County. So those funds come in through our organization and then are passed on to various organizations in the county that render services to older Americans. They go to DSS for in-home aid, they go to the Senior Center for Congregate and Home-Delivered Meals, County Transit for transportation services for seniors. Under the Area Agency on Aging, we also have an ombudsman that works with the care centers that seniors live in outside of their home, and those services are also given to family caregivers. So a lot of the aging money is intended to keep older folks in their homes as long as they want to, which makes for happier community members, and it also is, um, less of a financial burden on the governmental programs that house seniors. So we bring the funds into the region, we monitor how we're spent, how it's spent, make sure it's spent correctly, and that keeps the burden off of y'all having to administer it locally. Under Community and Economic Development, we do a wide variety of things. We provide strategic planning, board facilitation, we do a lot of grant writing, we do a lot of leveraging funds for infrastructure projects and strategic planning initiatives. We also have a transportation planning branch, which is the rural planning organization. That's what Commissioner Beal currently serves on. That is a liaison between local governments and the NCDOT, and one of the primary roles is to prioritize transportation projects, which is a state mandated process for deciding which projects will get funded each year. We're also getting ready to roll out an economic development initiative that will highlight and market the seven county region for economic development. It's called the Mountain West Partnership. Y'all may remember Advantage West, which operated in the 23 western counties, and when it was looking like they, that state organization for economic development was gonna change, the economic developers in Region A got together and said, "We really need to do something just for our region." So we've taken on the administrative role of that. We've brought in some funds, our board allocated some local funds, and we're not creating anything new. We're taking every entity that currently is involved in economic development in the region and getting them all on the same page. And then the product outside of the partnership will be a website aimed at economic development that will highlight our assets, both, um, physical assets and community assets, and it'll be a resource for entrepreneurs, a searchable database of all the business services in the region. We're also gonna have some videos on the website that will highlight, um, the quality of life that we have here for potential recruitment efforts. It's a very exciting project, and I hope that I'll be coming back soon to announce that we've launched it. It should be this summer. And finally, workforce development is also federal funds. The Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act works similarly to the Area Agency on Aging. The federal funds come through the state, through the regions, and out to the various entities in the region that work on workforce development, um, such as the NC Works Career Centers, which you have one right out here. One of the programs that, that affected Macon County most recently was when the Caterpillar Plant closed. The Workforce Department works with those dislocated workers to get them extended unemployment benefits, training opportunities, hopefully find them further employment when those types of things happen. We also have several training programs in workforce development from youth in high schools all the way up to adult age workers who need additional training, help getting through school, the whole array of services for people seeking jobs. So those are our three departments. I'm really excited to be in this role and to work with you whenever you need it. Call us anytime, and if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Sheriff. Questions or comments, gentlemen?
Anybody? Uh, Mr. Chairman, I always like to say I've had the privilege of working with Sarah for many years whilst she's been at the Southwest Commission, and if you go back through the history and look, uh, if you go back and look how the water system was done at the Highlands Plateau, Commissioner Tate, had it not been for the Southwest Commission, that probably not have happened. And a lot of the infrastructure that we enjoy today. But some things that you wouldn't realize that the Southwest Commission does that you're gonna hear, in a few minutes, you're gonna hear from our Social Services Director and from our Senior Services Director, and that's about what they do for the elderly in our district. And I also served on that committee, and so the Southwest Commission does a lot more than what people realize. And I'm so glad that Ms. Thompson's gonna be assuming those duties. She'll do a wonderful job. Ryan Sherby did a wonderful job. And, uh, and I think as people get to know that this is our only avenue to communicate with the DOT. This is it. And it's got a complicated point system that they don't understand.
Mm-hmm. It is complicated.
So, but we keep trying. So, uh, so thank you for being here, Ms. Thompson, and we, we, uh, we think you'll do a great job, and, and we think you've had a good chairman this year.
Yes, I agree.
That's provided good leadership for not only Macon County, but this district also.
Yes, I agree.
So we appreciate you being here.
Thank you. And one last thing, if you notice in the annual report, there's a, a bit of a ticker along the bottom of each page that goes over all the projects and initiatives we've worked on since we started 50 years ago. It's pretty fascinating to look through, so take a look at that.
And Sheriff, just, just a, a comment or two real quick. One thing you didn't mention that, that we sort of revamped during my first year as chairman is, is a revolving loan fund.
Oh, sure, of course.
And we got that, uh, sort of restarted, this is your funds that, that we receive that we can loan out at a relatively competitive interest rate. It's not to compete with local banks. As a matter of fact, generally what we've tried to do is take folks who don't fit the model of a local bank. Maybe they haven't been in business loan, uh, maybe their business model doesn't quite fit, uh, the, the temperature of that, of that bank, what they want. And so in the past few years, several years, we've loaned out over $6 million to businesses. One locally here that all of you can relate to, Brass Town Beef, here in Franklin, would not be down here where it's located. Talked to the owner, who is Steve Whitmire, many of you know, talked to Steve this past week. Part of the, part of the deal was to, uh, to create jobs, and between our loan, and then we were able to work through, uh, the, the board that I'm on with the Rural Infrastructure Authority.
Yep.
We got them some money.
Yep.
And they were to create nine new jobs.
Mm-hmm.
They created 25 new jobs. So that, that has been a boom for our county, and that's a lot of money.
Yep.
So that, that's just one small thing that this group does as a region. And the other thing I was gonna point out, I think if, when we talk about these things, we hear Region A, Southwest Commission, you think of some weird level of government, this is something the western part of the state just does. Every region has this.
In fact, every state.
There are 20, how many regions, 20?
Seventeen in North Carolina.
Seventeen in North Carolina, so there, we just happen to be the furthest west, which will be Region A for that reason. So the one on the coast is Region, whatever, 17.
Yeah.
Y'all do your ABCs real quick. Uh, K, I don't know. So it's, it's regions, it depends on the size of the region, we happen to be seven counties.
Mm-hmm.
And again, just so you know, it's, it's the county commissioners, mayors, and town board members of all those, so it's, everybody is involved in it. And the other thing I wanted to point out, and Sarah hit this, uh, and she made this point, but I wanted to say it again, what the counties pay to Region A amounts to $145,000. I think we pay $18,000, is that close, Derek, 17?
Yeah.
It's a fairly small amount for a $50 million budget. But we put that money in as counties and as towns, and they take that $145,000 total, not from Macon County, we only put in, whatever it is, 18, but all of us put in a total of $145, and they leverage that into $6 million of federal and state grant monies and other monies that come into our region to do these things like aging, workforce development, and economic development.
Mm-hmm.
So it's a very valuable resource. We can do a lot of things as a region that we can't do as a county, it's more efficient. And we don't need to create, uh, this type of work, uh, at each county, that would be very inefficient.
And it would cost more.
It would cost a lot more, so it's a very efficient way. And it's been happening for 50 years very efficiently, and I'm proud to be a part of it, so thank you.
Well, we're happy to have you. I appreciate your leadership, and I look forward to working with y'all. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Sheriff, for being here.
Mr. Chairman, I, I did fail to, uh, when you said about adding stuff to the agenda, I, I, under reports and presentations, I would, I was amiss and did not add our DSS Director and our Senior Services Director for a brief report.
Okay.
So if you could.
Would, would you like to add that to the agenda?
Uh, certainly would.
Would somebody second that motion? Motion second, all in favor of adding item 10D to the agenda? Please say aye. Opposed, that motion passes. Mr. Beal just publicly admitted he made a mistake. He heard that.
Because, because the county manager did not originally put it on the agenda as the question.
Who is employed by the county commissioners? My fault. Good answer. And also, one thing Commissioner Tate pointed out, we did not play the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners.
Which is shortened up considerably, may I add?
Video update, do we have that?
It's ready to go whenever you want.
Whenever you're ready, we will, uh, play the video update. This is from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, so.
Do you do that?
Yeah, let's go ahead and do that. And we get one of these a month, and again, pause, Mike, go in that, that group if you want to. Ah, there it is. They can start it for our video review. Thank you.
Hello and welcome to the County Update video for April 2016. This video is produced by the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners each month to keep county officials informed about association activities. Let's begin this month with a look at the NACO Annual Conference to be held in Los Angeles County, California, July 22nd through 25th, 2016. NACO invites you to join county officials, experts from the private and nonprofit sectors, and other leaders from across the country for the 2016 NACO Annual Conference and Exposition. Early bird registration for the conference should be submitted before June 10th, 2016. You can find more on the conference and a link to register by visiting our website and clicking on the events calendar where you'll see the event listed. You can also visit naco.org. Speaking of NACO, NCACC immediate past president Ronnie Beal has announced he will be running for North Carolina's number two seat on the NACO Board of Directors that is being vacated by Robeson County Commissioner Noah Woods. Woods has reached his NCACC constitutional term limits for the NACO Board seat. The NCSEC Constitution limits NACO Board seats to three two-year terms. There has been some much-talked-about action in Raleigh as the General Assembly convened a one-day special session on Wednesday, March 23rd, to pass legislation addressing local nondiscrimination ordinances and employee regulations. House Bill 2 entitled the Public Facilities Privacy and Security Act was introduced on the morning of March 23rd and passed both chambers later that day. The House voted 82 to 26 to approve the bill, while the Senate approved the bill 32 to 0, with 11 senators not voting. The governor signed the bill later that evening. The bill requires single-sex multiple occupancy bathrooms and changing facilities in public schools and public agencies. It prohibits counties from requiring private contractors to abide by certain employment regulations, and it preempts county nondiscrimination and employment regulation ordinances except for those applying to county personnel. The scheduled start of the short session of the General Assembly will be on April 25th, 2016. District meetings are going on now all around the state, and we have County Assembly Day, the biggest advocacy day of the year, here in Wake County on May 18th. Please visit our website at ncc.org/countyassemblyday to sign up and to get more information. The N C A C C Board of Directors met on Wednesday, March 30th, and heard a number of presentations regarding the North Carolina property tax system, association finances, a new association magazine publication called County Quarterly, food and nutrition benefits distribution, and much more. The Board of Directors adopted dues for the association members, keeping them flat for 2016-17, which means the structure of dues will have no change, and population changes will be the only factor that might change the dues paid by a county. This marks the seventh consecutive year the Board has decided to lower or maintain the dues structure. Visit our website and click on Meeting Minute at the bottom of the page to view videos from all of our meetings. Well, that's all we have for this month. Thank you for watching and allowing us to keep you updated on your association's activities. If you'd like more information on anything we discussed here, please visit www.ncacc.org or contact us directly using the information on your screen. Thanks again for joining us, and we'll see you next month.
Stop. Thank you, Sarah. All right, thank you, guys. Next, we have tour Macon County, North Carolina, and we have Dale and Dawn McGivney that are here with us.
We have a lot of sponsors here, too. If you guys want to stand up real quick, if that's okay. Emery Crawford, all the way from Winston-Salem.
From where?
Well, he, Mr. Nantahala, but he traveled from Winston-Salem to come.
Don't you say a word, Ronnie.
We have Eric Hendricks as well, with Eric's Fresh Fish Market, Evelyn Owens, Martha Holberg, Mossy Rock, and our wonderful friends Amanda and Chris from, you guys just give them a big smile.
All right. Thank you, guys, for being here.
Okay.
Thank you, Dawn.
So, thank you. I'm super nervous, but I wanted to say that our company, it's an honor to be able to do the Tour Macon County N C project. My family settled here in 1802, and we gave a large portion of the land for the airport, so the fact that it accidentally happened to be a kiosk at the airport was absolutely exciting and really, really neat to be able to be a part of. But the video and kiosk portion of this tour project, Tour Macon County N C, the goal is to create different video segments so that people can engage in individual segments that they're interested in. And also, any website can insert or embed the video segments into their website for free. So with the cosponsorship project, basically, our sponsors talk about our county, and their business logo is there, but they don't sell themselves. They only sell what it's like to live in Macon County. The reason that this is important for, we've been doing, you know, Tour Highlands N C, Tour Asheville N C, Tour Franklin N C, all of these tours, these town tours, since 2009. The Asheville tour actually has George and Jack Vanderbilt Cecil in them, so they become quite historic over time. But with Macon County, we really wanted to make sure that we had a really complete picture of what was here. What we find, because we do a lot of work in real estate, is that if you can get someone to visit Macon County, or anywhere, spend a little money and eat a bite, do a little shopping, then spend, you know, they got to get comfortable enough to feel like they can spend the night in the town, then maybe they'll come back for a little longer, rent a vacation rental, and possibly move here, buy a second home, and then possibly bring their business here. And so the goal with the tour projects is for them to feel like they've met everybody that they can meet, important people, visionaries, so they feel comfortable making those decisions more quickly. It's very authentic, no one is scripted. We sit with people for about an hour, and we try to talk to them about what their passion is for Macon County. And so that's kind of the overall goal. We have 28 segments at this point, and we have entertainment, activities, location, culinary, real estate, construction, arts and culture, festivals, worship, transportation, home decor, golf, shopping, lodging, A T, gem mining, health and wellness, municipalities, legacy, education, parks and recreation, lawn and gardens, developments, entrepreneurs, agriculture, weddings, and technology. And we want to do kids fun, if we can get some kid, kids-type businesses in, because we think that's really attractive to parents. In the project, we're also going to have kids interviewing, like I was talking to Seth Adams today, and we're going to do some interviews from kids at the park and why they love what we have here in Macon County. For a parent to hear from children who enjoy themselves is a powerful thing. We want people to move their families here and their businesses, too. So that's kind of the goal. I wanted to give a quick list of our sponsors, and we so appreciate them. The county doesn't pay anything for the video production. Initially, we were approached to give a price for a video project, a large one, and it really wasn't a good thing for the county because it was, you know, how can you include everyone? So with the cosponsorship, people take care of their own messaging, you know, their own subject, like culinary or lodging or anything like that. So they kind of cover it, and they're not selling themselves, so it makes it more friendly to digest. But anyway, so we have, of course, us, Highland Media Works. The E D C, they do pay for the kiosk, it's a, you know, one-time fee of $850. We have Franklin Chamber of Commerce, Angel Medical Center, Highlands Hospital, Country Club Properties, Highlands Cove Realty, Old Edwards Club, Park on Main, Rain, Macon Rental, Oak Hill Country Inn, Bed and Breakfast, The Bowery, Lazy Hiker, Mossy Rock, Meadows Mountain Berkshire Hathaway, Evelyn Owens Team, Keller Williams, Arrowhead Point Development, Mountain Pro Real Estate, Arrowhead Construction, Marty Kimsey Remax, Motor Company Grill, Crab Chee General Store and Coffee Vault, Highlands Properties, Deal Farms, Eric's Fresh Fish Market, Anon Care Wellness, Merritt Farms, Cowie Pottery, Smoky Mountain Performing Arts Center, Creative Framing, Mason Mountain Mine and Cowie Gift Shop, and Macon County Recreation Department. And so we're pretty excited because that really does show quite a bit of what we are here in Macon County. We also have a sponsorship from Nantahala, so they're going to have, you know, more of a presence in the tour, which is really important. Now, now initially, we have to be quite flexible because there's only one of each type of businesses in Macon County. So we, we had to approach people gently and say, whatever kind of way that you can, you know, get involved in the project, let us know what works for you. Because we know that it's different for everyone, and you can't replace anybody, really, you know, in the county. So we've tried very hard to make sure, you know, that even though we are getting revenue, it's not something that, you know, it's something that we gather over time. It's only $350 to sponsor a segment and $150 for the kiosk, and $150 a year recurring fee, which when you look at real estate publications, often it's $1,500 every six weeks. So there's a huge value for, for our people here in Macon County, our businesses. Our goal is not to just do a little bit of video, we need to do a lot of video for a lot of people. So we also offered a business minute. So we interview people a little longer, and for $200, they can get their own business minute so that they can have something to use on their website, or Facebook, or something that's reusable. Because what we noticed is that on Facebook, it's free marketing. So when people share each other's videos, they actually can see revenue that day because everyone who has a certain group of Facebook friends, that's your, those are your, your market share in the county. And so when we're talking about small, local businesses for economic development, it's very important to give them a tool so that they can keep people mindful of their businesses. And so I wanted to, just real quickly, I wanted to share a business minute with you. This is not the tour. This is, these, these are our businesses from, from our folks here here. So just real quick, they're just a minute long.
Which one do you want to do first?
Just anybody's that's here. There's Evelyn, Martha, Emery, he already had, he didn't do the business minute because he already had a video, but Eric and Amanda. So there's Eric right there at the top.
We'll start with Eric.
Can you go full screen? We've got audio?
Eric's Fresh Fish Market has two wonderful locations, one in Silva downtown and the other here on the Highlands Road in Franklin. Because I source everything in the store from fish all the way to avocado oil, the fact is, nobody stands in between me and the fish you get. All of my live lobsters come out of Maine, two days from the water, they've never been stored in a tank, and they're incredible. There's nothing like getting a side of salmon and cooking it on the grill with a bunch of friends, or buying some cod and deep-frying it and enjoying it. Having a shrimp boil, you know, with your buds or oysters, it creates community. So the next time people are coming over for a dinner party, call Eric's Fresh Fish Market, find out what the weekly catch is. You'll be glad you did.
So it's real simple, it's basic media, but it's something he can use over and over again. And there usually is music, I think it's a monotone or something, but there's usually music. So just pull the next one. There, there's Mossy Rock. Lots of fun. There's the music.
Mossy Rock is located on Main Street, Franklin, North Carolina. We are excited that we're in this historic building that has been in retail for over 100 years. When you walk in Mossy Rock, it's like a mountain adventure. You discover things at every turn. We have candles, we have greeting cards, jewelry, accessories, we have gourmet teas, we have lots of great items to decorate your home with, we carry clothing and accessories, lots of scarves. We hear all the time from our customers that they love to shop here because we have unique things that you don't see anyplace else. When you buy something to take home with you, it is something to remember, visiting Franklin. At Mossy Rock, we have a lot for you to see.
And you see, there's a thread of reusability with this media. It's not something they're going to have to update, you know, or change it for $200. Normally, this is $1,500 per finished minute. So our businesses are getting a great deal.
When my parents moved to Macon County close to 40 years ago, there were no rental companies, and they felt the need to start a rental company, and they started with a log splitter and a chainsaw and did a little service work, and so the business grew to be what it is today.
People will come in and we direct them to the right tool for their job, and we also have the knowledge about how that tool's used, the little tips and tricks, and it makes them feel a little more confident that they can do the job themselves. While we are a Macon rental company, we do actually have quite a lot of our business that is retail of power equipment and service. The retail part, we have everything from handlets through chainsaws, weed eaters, generators, and all the way up to zero-turn riding mowers. Our brands include Honda Power Equipment, Red Max, John Sred, and Hustler Turf, Akita, Arbor's Climbing Gear, all accessories, and then all the service afterwards we do provide.
And you'll notice a sense of history in the videos. It's really important to connect people with how long they've been with the community. So Evelyn, is this the last one? Yeah, it's because. A little fun with real estate friends. My favorite thing.
Evelyn Owens Team here at Keller Williams wants to make a win-win situation for both buyers and sellers. We want to give great service in a professional way. I have buyer agents that specialize in working with the buyers, and then I have specialists that specialize in just listing the homes. Most of the people that come to the area looking for homes are looking for more of a rustic look. Almost everybody wants either a view or creek, and of course, we have a lot of those in the area. It's just really dynamic here. My sellers get a lot of exposure when they list with the Evelyn Owens Team. Up front, we do a market analysis, and I spend a lot of time choosing homes that are comparable to theirs, doing the adjustments, so when I'm finished, they have a really good idea of what that house might sell for in our market. It's a pleasure to welcome people into Macon County, into Franklin, Highlands, and Nantahala, and help them find their forever home.
So that gives you a little taste of what we're doing for the businesses. And, and when you create a lot of media, you can do that. It won't take me much longer to finish out here, guys, but I did want to say that we met with Tommy and Dr. Lockwood at the Macon County Airport, and they picked out the kiosk that they liked. We are going to offer coupons from the kiosk so people can actually be drawn to it and actually get value by interacting with it. The kiosk, the website, and the couponing program were all created by our company at no cost to the county or any of our sponsors. So, and also it creates an opportunity for banner ads for Macon County to actually make 50% of the banner ad revenue from the kiosk because they did buy the equipment. And so it really creates an opportunity for, for actual revenue. It's a very conservative and sustainability. It's a conservative, but it's a very progressive project because we want to meet everybody's needs. Okay, so that's the kiosk, the database. Western Carolina University student marketing team was assigned to our company from S C C, and they created a database. They helped us create a database of all the businesses in Macon County divided out by the different subjects in our tour so that we can identify how to communicate with them. But more importantly, they did a SWOT analysis, so strength, weakness, opportunities, and threats on their digital exposure online. We want to make sure that if there are opportunities to connect our business owners with help to get their websites created, or any type of help with Facebook marketing, or whatever they need to do, we'll be able to identify what their weakness is and how to connect them if there does become funds for our business owners to access, to, you know, get help. Because when people connect with Macon County, it's not usually the chamber's website first or your website, it's these little websites, these vacation rentals, these places that, you know, are interested in people, and often they don't have the money for media. So through this project, they can embed any subject, any video they want on their website and be able to express how great Macon County is. So that's important. Now, as far as the, I just wanted to give you a price rundown on what you guys are getting for what we've done, the value of it. As I said before, a low market rate for video production is $1,500 per finished minute. So through this tour, we have 20, 28 segments. Normally, in our Tour Highlands or Tour Franklin or Tour Asheville projects, each segment's between two and five minutes long. So if you do the calculations, at a base of two minutes per subject, the value would cost $84,000. But through the cosponsorship and through the visionaries that we have, the cost is only $10,150 just to cover the video portion. Now, we also did 30, you know, 30 business minutes for $200 per. And normally, that would be $1,500 per finished minute, it would be $45,000. But through the tour, because of collaboration and, you know, people really trying to pull together so we could have something more and not come to you guys for a ton of money, we were able to do it for $6,000. Now, as far as the kiosk, normally, people, each business pays $150 a year, and the, we integrate their website into the kiosk so that people who interact with the kiosk can't go to other websites. They can only go to the sponsors' websites. Because we want them to be able to fill out a, a form to find out, you know, about a property for sale, or, you know, get a reservation at a restaurant if that's the type of restaurant it is, or whatever. So we want people to interact with the websites of our business owners because that's where they put all their money into, is their, is their website. So we integrate that, and it's only $150 a year for them to continue being in the project. So, but the website, the kiosk creation, the couponing program is usually, would run about $10,000. So at the end of the day, you guys, our county, which we're honored to work for, is going to receive between $140,000 plus in value at a cost of $17,000. And so, you know, I hope you guys see that we did our best to make it a low enough bar that people can access good media so that, and also put them in a collaboration because they share each other's videos. You know, we have a sharing is caring mantra, and we want people to share each other's work. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, but I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dawn.
Thank you, Dawn. Let me just say one thing.
Here.
Dawn, you and Dale both have done a lot of hard work, and it's my legwork. I want to say thank you to the sponsors that you've generated over the time, and I hope we, as a governing board, what you presented here and I can see the value of the transparency of our county, and we can support you any way we can.
And it's different for everyone, and we just appreciate every effort that's been made. Each of you have, excuse me, I'm a little nervous, but each of you have given, you know, given us your time and talked to us about the project. That's really important. If you can encourage other businesses to sponsor so we can open up segments, it's very important just to at least have one sponsor for a segment. The other things, you can write letters to the editor of the papers so that we can get better press coverage because it's such a complex project. Often, people just see it as a kiosk ad program, and that's not what it is. It meets so many different needs, from the individual business to our county, to our towns, and so that's important. And if you could like and share our Tour Macon County N C Facebook page, everyone looks to you guys. You guys are the, you know, the heroes of our town, and so if you could help just by letting, you know, information if you Facebook, which I encourage you guys to be a part of because Facebook is where a lot of our businesses are getting exposure. And then the last thing, if you can share the And then the last thing, if you can share the business minute videos of our businesses, that will help them. And the whole goal is to create a tourist-based video that everybody can use. And it's always can be updated, but we are having a premiere and so we really want to have as full a picture as we can. But with your help, I know we, I know we'll make our goal, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Don.
And I just wanted to add on the press coverage. I just spoke to Ryan a little while ago and it looks like we're going to have an article coming out on Friday. So, and that's going to be a truly educational piece so that everyone can learn all the ins and outs and all the details and benefits of the project. But I'd like to thank all you gentlemen for having us here this evening and thank all of our sponsors for coming and the public for joining as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, David.
Yes.
Mr. Beal had added, C. Robbs.
About Rob.
It's almost seven, we get that. We understand.
Clear.
Item D is a report from our DSS Director and our Senior Services Board. Do you need to introduce that or clarify that?
I think they're at the hall. We step out in the hall. Mr. Chairman, it was mine and the county manager's privilege last week to be at the Senior Services Building as they recognize the volunteers that make, as Ms. Jenkins comes forward, our Senior Services Director and Patrick Beckenford, our DSS Director. And so after hearing their report, we wanted them to come before this board and before the public and, and give a report. I think that especially in the past year, in the past couple of years, people don't realize what our senior services, not only how much it's grown, but exactly what all is taking place and especially what it's doing for Macon County. So Patrick, you or Sheila, whoever has the floor, we thank you for being here and we know you have some exciting news to share with the folks and this board.
Thank you, Commissioner Beal. Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Anytime you tell a story, you have to have both numbers and you have to have sort of a story to present. I'm pretty good at presenting the story, not so great with the numbers. So Sheila's going to help me out with that part. The event that Commissioner Beal spoke about was a recognition of over 100 volunteers that donate their time to Macon County Senior Services. Last week, we had about 50 of those volunteers show up and be recognized among their peers. Those 50 volunteers contributed about $216,000 in local dollars last state fiscal year based on their volunteer time. That's somewhere in the neighborhood of about 15,000 hours that they donated of their own time. One of the highlights of the evening was to recognize the 30 years that the Senior Health Insurance Information Program has been in existence here in Macon County. And the program known as SHIP provides information to Macon County senior citizens, helping them to make the most informed choices about a complex insurance world. During that, during that last year, they saved Macon County citizens somewhere in the neighborhood of about $720,000 in just the information that they were able to provide. 30 years for a program is a mighty long time, but we also had the distinct pleasure of recognizing two volunteers that are natives of Macon County and regrettably, a sad note for Macon County when we lost John Crawford recently. But Mr. and Mrs. Crawford have donated 30 years of their time, their involvement to the Senior Health Information Insurance Program. And it was a privilege to be a part of that recognition with them there. They weren't the only folks who had been contributing a great amount of their time. We also have some volunteers who have been delivering, as you know, the Senior Services Center delivers home meals or home delivers meals to some citizens in the county who are unable to, to get out. And we've had a driver who's been with us now for 25 years delivering those meals. And it's just amazing when you stop and think about how, what, how much of a commitment that is to make to just volunteering your time. And I'm pleased to report that it's the, it's this sort of dedication and this sort of volunteerism that this amazing organization is built on. And I appreciate your recognition of the time and the, and the dedication these folks have given.
Thank you.
Thank you. Miss Sheila.
Yes.
Your name?
You pretty much said it all. I just wanted to add, $720,000 that was saved, that was saved in Medicare Day, which I'm familiar with. It's on premiums and medication costs out of pocket and on premium costs out of pocket. So that, that's a lot of money that was saved for the people in Macon County. I just wanted to add that. We pretty much covered.
We're not going to let him off that.
Well, I didn't figure you would.
As liaison to this, to this department, this, this group with, if you look at the budget and how, and with Patrick's help and of course with, before that with Jane's help and of course with Sheila managing the department, this year, you're going to see in the numbers, you'll see it at budget time, Sheila has experienced an 18% increase in people walking through the door. I mean, that's huge. And, and when we saw these numbers and the county manager can save, we sat down and heard these numbers of the savings to the, to the Maconians, we just, you know, you just shake your head. So, and what we do in Macon County, well, I don't think we're the only county in the far west that does it. We do, not only, we do Disability Day Care. We're the only county in the far west that does that, by the way. A lot of people don't know that. So, so if, if you've not had a chance to visit the John and Dorothy Crawford Senior Services Center, I would encourage you to do so. I remember the night me and Charlie Ledman walked through that thing and said, well, this should be a good place for that and it's way too big, but what are we going to do with it? But you walked through it today and now you wonder, what are we going to do? So, so thank you. Thank you both. Thank you, Sheila, for what you do every day, for our, for our most valuable citizens in our county. And Patrick, thank you. And these volunteers, like I told them out there, I know a piece of pizza, certainly not enough, but I don't know how else you thank them. So, so they're, they're very much appreciated. And without them, would it work, Sheila, without the volunteers?
No. The meals would never be delivered. For one, the state will not let you pay somebody. They will not let us use our block grant to pay somebody delivering. And two, there's not enough money to do that. So that problem would not exist if it were not for our volunteers.
Over 2,700 meals, by the way, were delivered in Macon County.
Thousand.
Just to give you an idea. Amazing.
Twenty-seven thousand last year, wasn't it?
Yeah. And we're looking at probably 32, 33,000 this year.
Wow.
2,700. We just keep, 2,700 meals a month. It's hard to manage.
That's awesome.
And we thank you for your support.
Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila and Patrick for what you do. Appreciate both of you very much. Under new business, I will turn it over. Our next four items will actually be our county attorney, and Chester has indicated he has those items ready. I will tell you, we did delete item A, which is a resolution and agreement regarding Macon County Business Development Center, and we have postponed that item to probably the next meeting or so. So with that said, I'm going to recognize our county attorney. The first item of business is proposed amendment to the Little Tennessee River Greenway Ordinance. Chester.
A few months back, Brittany Raby came before this board and made a presentation on behalf of an organization by the name of Reed to me to install some storyboards along the portion of the greenway to help encourage reading among young people. And if you will recall, at that particular time, I indicated I needed to take a look at some conservation easements to see if there were any problems and also the, the actual greenway ordinance to make sure there wouldn't be anything in there that could be construed as a prohibition of doing this type of project. The report that I would have on that is the conservation easements are actually to, I guess, I guess that would be to the north and to the south of this little area that we're talking about here. So we're in good shape there. However, there is some language in the existing greenway ordinance which might tend to prohibit a project like this. And so what I have done is I have proposed an amendment to this board to make it clear that this particular type of project would not be prohibited. And so I am submitting to you an ordinance amending, an ordinance regulating the use of Little Tennessee River Greenway as amended this evening.
Gentlemen, I've, I've read this. I would recommend approving this amendment of the ordinance as presented. I would entertain a motion to that effect.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Tate, second by Commissioner Shields. In discussion? Chester, I think there's, in the, under the exceptions-
Yes.
-in the, the second paragraph there, I think there's one too many "any such." I think it says "any such, any such authorization."
Okay. We will make that change and would ask that it be approved with that change.
Okay. And if you guys will accept that as you're amended with your motion, then any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion passes. Next item is also our county attorney, the agreement regarding the story walk.
Actually, there are two agreements. There's one for the greenway, one for Parker Meadows. And in a nutshell, what each of these would do would be to authorize Reed to me to install 12 reading cords at each location in a place that is approved by a county manager. It's my understanding that Reed and me desires to do this as a service to the community. And I think the indication is, is that the county would like to allow them to do so.
Did you say 12 cords?
Yes.
I think there's actually 15.
15?
Yes.
Okay, well, then that's going to require a little change right quick.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with a noted change of 15.
To 15 in each.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the agreement. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is the, we have the cancellation of, I think, two deeds of trust. Is that not correct?
That is correct.
Mr. Attorney?
As you know, the county has been involved, I think it's a community development block grant program that funds some housing rehabilitation or has herefore been involved in that project. These loans basically work themselves out to be forgiven provided that the homeowners comply with the terms of the agreement note, indeed trust, and continue to own their home for the requisite period of time. We have two of those this evening that need to be looked at, one for Maxine Hyde and one for Mr. Jack E. Cheek. I have communicated with John Fay of the Housing Department of Macon County. He has assured me that each of these deeds of trust are appropriate for cancellation and indeed, we've had requests on behalf of those individuals or the estates of those individuals for that to be done.
Okay. With that said, I would entertain a motion to, to approve the cancellation.
Cancellation and to authorize chairman and the-
County manager.
County manager to execute those releases this evening so that we don't hold up some closings.
Some movement, Chairman.
Second. We have a motion by Beal, second by Shields. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion passes. I think the last thing that Chester has for us is the Macon County TDA interlocal agreement. And I think, Chester, you placed a copy of that in front of each question. Is that correct?
In a nutshell, if you'll recall, Kim Angel appeared before this board and indicated that she was going to make available some Macon transit services to bring people in from the Appalachian Trail to come, enjoy the town of Franklin, hopefully stay with us, resupply, stay in motels, eat at restaurants, and enjoy the town of Franklin and Macon County a little bit on their journey. She has been communicating with the TDA. The TDA for the town of Franklin has agreed to help and assist in that process by providing the sum of $3,375 to the county to allow for the county to, or to assist the county in having that transit program.
Do we have to do the same thing with the TBC?
If, if there is going to be any agreement with the TBC, yes, we would.
We provide incentives. From the TBC, it's about the same amount, I believe. So is there something I need to, as a TBC liaison?
I'm not familiar with it.
I'll make a motion to approve this stream.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Tate. Do we have a second for that motion?
Second for first of discussion.
Okay, we have a second, in discussion.
I'll get back with, with Roland here. The TBC did, it was $7,000. I think we split it. They provided $3,375 and I think we did to the TBC. And if we need enough there on that, I'll get back to Ms. Roland or Ms. Harbuck and do whatever we need to do for Macon Ryan.
So that will find another interlocal agreement? That's a different organization?
I think it would, but it's going to be an easy one to do.
Okay.
I'll get back to the county manager.
Okay.
You'll say it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion passes. Gentlemen, we have an application in front of you. Everyone should have a copy. It's titled Public School Building Capital Fund. As you know, the North Carolina Education Lottery, 40% of those proceeds was promised back to the counties. That's currently at about, it depends on-
17.23?
It's 17%. Some sources say it's 25%. I don't understand their math, but it should be 40%. So I think the legislature probably needs to take a look at that, but that's-
You'll have that opportunity.
Down the road, but anyway, there are, there are funds there available for Macon County and for that to happen, that application has to come from the Macon County Board of Commissioners. So, Lord, with that said, it's about $290,048.
A motion to go after money, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion second to apply for the lottery funds before the amount's reduced to 15%. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion passes. That was an editorial comment, I realize, but I apologize. The, we have the consent.
No, you don't.
We have the consent agenda. Gentlemen, there's several items on there that normally don't require any, any discussion. That would be the minutes of the March 8th meeting, budget amendments 168 through 174, tax releases and tax refund. Any discussion on those? Any item to be removed or motion to pass the consent agenda?
Make a motion to consent agenda. It passes as presented.
Second. We have a motion by Shields, second by Tate. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion passes. Item 13 is we have appointments. Only one that I have down was the, is the Town of Franklin Planning Board and Board of Adjustment. Mike, what's the status on that?
I believe the Town of Franklin is asking you to concur with their recommendation to reappoint Dave Jones to that board as the representative of the UT-